This meeting is called to order. Everybody would please stand, I'm sorry Stella, please read the call. My last meeting and I already forgot how to run it.
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a special meeting on Tuesday, June 26, 2007, at 5:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
Everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Barrera?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Not a word, thank. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be Texas one and indivisible.
At this time I would ask Bob Clark to please lead us in our invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we've had a great run here for the last few years. Our population is exploding. Our businesses are opening up almost weekly. And Lord, I know that you have many things in store for Brownsville. So Lord, the first thing I would like to pray for this evening is unification among everyone, all of us that put our city first. Lord, we just ask that bygones be bygones and that we ask that the City Commission, the department heads, all the employees of the City of Brownsville work together for the betterment of our city. Lord, we want to pray at this time for our schools, for our children. In just a short period of time, we're going to be facing 50,000 students plus in our city schools. Our city is truly growing and it's just the beginning. So Lord, help those that are in this chambers this evening to do the best, if not better than the best, for our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Bob. Welcome to everybody here this evening. We want to thank you for your attendance. We have a very special meeting this evening. This is a changing of the guard, turning of a new page in the history of Brownsville, or return to an old chapter depending on one's perspective. Stella, item number one.
Item number one, consideration in action on Resolution Number 2007-033 canvassing and declaring the results of the special municipal runoff election held on June 16, 2007, for the purpose of electing a mayor and an at-large Commissioner A.
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, I have the results of the runoff election for June 16th with the all precincts voting. For Mr. Pat Almada, we had 4,207 votes. For Mr. Ernie Hernandez, we had 3,268. For Mr. Ernesto De Leon, we had 3,195. And for Anthony Troyani, we had 4,196. The resolution declares that this election was duly ordered and proper notice was given and that the commission officially will find and determine and declares the result of said election to be that Patricio M. Pat Almada is hereby declared to be elected as mayor and Anthony P. Troyani is declared to be elected as at-large Commissioner A of the City of Brownsville. We also have the results for the recount, but I would need to read that item for you.
All right. This is an action item on item number one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Nettles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'd ask you to please turn off your cellphones. Item number two.
Item number two, consideration in action on Resolution 2007-034 canvassing and declaring the results of the recount of the special municipal runoff election held on June 16th for the purpose of electing a mayor. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, I have the results of the runoff election, of the recount for the runoff election that was held on June 16th. The recount itself was held June 23rd. With all the precincts voting, in the recount total was 1,599 for Mr. Almada and 906 for Mr. Ernie Hernandez. If we do a summary, we have for Mr. Almada, an early voting total, 2,340, mail-in total 269, and recount total of 1,599 for a total of 4,208. For Mr. Ernie Hernandez, we have an early voting total of 1,889, mail-in total of 477, and recount total of 906, for a total of 3,272. Resolution canvassing these results will find that the commission determines and declares the result of said election to be Mr. Pat M. Pat Almada is hereby declared to be elected as mayor of the City of Brownsville, Texas.
This is an action item.
Remove.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Before we move on to item three, let me just recognize a few special people, dignitaries that we have with us here this evening. We are my compadre desde Matamoros vino, a saludar al nuevo presidente municipal. Everybody, please give a warm welcome to our Mayor Matamoros Batasada Enojosa. During the swearing-in this evening, we have State District Judge Arturo C. Nelson. County Court at Law Judge Laura Bednecourt. We have PUB Board Members Chris Valdez. Chairman of the Board Robert Sanchez. I see the Honorable Family Court Judge J.J. Martinez, Juan Jose. I also see our Mexican Consul Victor Trevino Escudero. Municipal Court Judge, Presiding Judge, Judge Renee LaCoss. I can't see anybody else. If you're here and you're an elected official, thank you so much for being here this evening. Item three.
Item three, consideration in action regarding the issuance of certificates of election and the administrations of the oath of offices and assumption of duties of elected officials. I would like to read the statement of elected officer to Mr. Troyani, if he would please step up. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Affirm.
Affirm.
And affirm that I have not directly.
And affirm that I have not directly.
Or indirectly.
Or indirectly.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Contributed, or promised to contribute.
Contributed, or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
At the election.
At the election.
At which I was elected.
At the election of which I was elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So nobody thinks we got ahead of ourselves. That's a certificate of election. Now Judge Bednecourt will perform the oath.
Sure.
The honor, can we go over there and take pictures or not?
Absolutely. Well, it's up to the commissioner.
If my family and friends want to come up, that's fine.
If the Troyani and Cantu family would come up and their supporters.
And supporters.
And their supporters, if you'd like to have them up.
Please come on in.
Absolutely. Commissioner Longoria brought everybody who voted for him last month. One ten.
No wonder you won.
Family. All right. Well, before we.
Don't you grab the, there's another mic right there Judge, right in front of him.
All right. Before we begin with the oath of office, I just wanted to say a little about what I know about Anthony. And Anthony was, he attended high school here in Brownsville and because his parents, who are here with him today, Mr. and Mrs. Troyani, because they traveled a lot, their jobs, because of their jobs, they had to travel a lot. Anthony moved around a lot. But after attending law school, he came back to Brownsville. And he has been here ever since he started his law career. He married Christine Cantu from Brownsville and they've started their family here and he's had a very successful law practice here. And Anthony is a very hard worker. You can drive by his office at the 700 building early in the morning and his car's there. And in the evening and his car's there. And on the weekends, his car's there. And when he first told me that he was going to seek office as a city commissioner, I said, where are you going to find the time? And it's going to be tough. I said, do you really need to think about this because it's going to be tough? Your family, law practice, and now his position, the responsibilities as a city commissioner, is going to be torn in three directions. But he said, I'm ready for it and this is what I want to do. And he's worked really hard at it, as has his family. They were there every step of the way. And so I wish to congratulate you, Anthony. And are you ready?
Raise a little bit.
Okay. All right. Raise your right, go ahead and raise your right hand.
Okay.
I.
I.
Anthony Troyani.
Anthony Troyani.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties.
The duties.
As city, as Commissioner of the City of Brownsville.
As Commissioner of City of Brownsville.
Cameron County.
Cameron County.
Texas.
Cameron County, Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations Commissioner.
Just really quick so we can get on with our meeting this evening, I just want to thank everybody. And I really, really am humbled by, you know, all the help that my family and friends and supporters have given me throughout this campaign. It was the first time that I've ever run for anything and it was just a real blessing for all the support that everybody showed. And I couldn't have done it without my wife and her family and my family and everybody else that pitched in. Thank you and I just hope that I can meet y'all's expectations. Thank you.
Do solemnly affirm. That I have not directly. That I have not directly. Or indirectly paid. Offered. Offered. Promised to pay. Promised to pay. Contributed, or promised to contribute. Contributed, or promised to contribute. Any money or thing of value. Any money or thing of value. Or promised any public office. Or promised any public office. Or employment. Or employment. For the giving or withholding. For the giving or withholding. Of a vote at the election. Of a vote at the election. At which I was elected. At which I was elected. So help me God. So help me God.
Hi, I'm Arturo C. Nettles Nelson, District Judge of the 130th District Court. I've known Pat for about twenty, for about 28 years. I've seen him go through different changes in his life, from being one of the most productive shrimp boat captains with the least damage to his rig, to being a paralegal, to being a businessman, to being a mayor, then back to business, and now mayor again. All I can say is that Brownsville is truly blessed because I don't remember in recent history when we have had so many eminently qualified candidates running for mayor and running for city commission. We've really been blessed. Usually it's hard to get good people to run. This time we've had a lot of good people run. And I warned everybody when they asked me, what do you think about Pat? I says, he's one of the smartest guys I know. Do not underestimate him and I wasn't wrong. The only problem is, he's going to start signing P.M. Almada now. And at least for as long as he's mayor, va ser el primer mandatario de la ciudad de Brownsville. Let's go in and make it happen. I, Pat Almada. I, Pat Almada. Do solemnly affirm. Do solemnly affirm. That I will faithfully execute the duties. That I will faithfully execute the duties. As mayor of the City of Brownsville. As mayor of the City of Brownsville. Cameron County. Cameron County. And of the state of Texas. And of the state of Texas. And will, to the best of my ability. And will, to the best of my ability. Preserve. Preserve. Protect and defend. Protect and defend. The Constitution. The Constitution. And laws of the United States. And laws of the United States. And of this state. And of this state. So help me God. So help me God.
I'm excited to leave. Pat's excited to come, but we forgot one thing. Item three, we need an action, we need a motion.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Cisneros, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, now it's us.
Before, we're going to be a little informal to begin with because I think it's important to appreciate and value those who are willing to serve, who run for office, whether they make it or not, it takes a lot of courage just to put yourself up to the plate and ask citizens to consider you for whatever office you're running for, public office. The mayor's leaving, it's not the end. He's a citizen of Brownsville, I expect him to stay involved. So we're going to start the meeting by recognizing him as he leaves and giving him a proclamation for his service and also the Commissioner Sally Arroyo, who was here and served you out of their free will and wanted to do something good for Brownsville. So City Secretary, would you please read the proclamations and issue?
Would you want the mayor's proclamation first?
Mayor's proclamation.
A proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, commending Eddie Trevino Jr. for his service on the Brownsville City Commission. Whereas Eddie Trevino Jr. served from December 2001 to May 2003 as Brownsville City Commissioner representing District 6, and whereas Eddie Trevino Jr. served from June 2003 to June 2007 as mayor of the City of Brownsville, and whereas during this six-year period of public service, Eddie Trevino Jr. distinguished himself by selflessly giving of his expertise, time, and energy to the city he loved so well and to the people who live in that city. And whereas Eddie Trevino Jr. will long be remembered for his public service. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby thank and commend Eddie Trevino Jr. for his contributions to our city and the work he did on its behalf. Done this, the 26th day of June 2007, signed, Pat Almada, Mayor and the rest of the city commissioners.
Mayor Almada, thank you so much for this recognition. You didn't have to do this and I appreciate the fact that you did do this at your first meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, those of you that are in attendance, those of you that are watching, let me first of all wish Mayor Almada and the new city commission all the luck, all the blessings that the good Lord can bestow upon them as they continue to lead our city into the future. I can't tell Pat what he's expecting because he knows better than most people and because of that, I also hope that each, both of you and I have learned from our prior lessons and our prior experiences. And I told you before and I'll repeat it again, I will be here, I will make myself available at your disposal to help move the city forward. You campaigned on uniting, I can tell you right now that I'm here to work with you on that endeavor. May God continue to bless you, Mayor Almada, city commissioners, especially your families. Get used to the grind again, Commissioner Troyani. I can tell you all about it afterwards. I didn't tell you before, I'll tell you now. So God bless you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you Mayor and I'll be calling you. Thank you very much. City Secretary, would you be kind enough to read the next one?
Proclamation for Mr. Anthony Troyani. I'm sorry, Sally Arroyo, pardon me.
He's not leaving, he just got here. Leaving already? He just got here. Is he leaving already?
Not far.
Getting ahead of ourselves here. Proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, commanding Sally Minella Arroyo for her service on the Brownsville City Commission. Whereas Sally Minella Arroyo served from June 10, 2003 to June 26, 2007, as Brownsville City Commissioner representing the at-large A position, and whereas Sally Minella Arroyo gave of her time, energy, and compassion to the people of Brownsville for four full years, and whereas Sally Minella Arroyo deserves the thanks and gratitude of the citizens she represented as well as her fellow commissioners who worked alongside her for the benefit of the people. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby recognize and thank Sally Minella Arroyo for her contributions to our city and for the work she did on behalf of all the people of Brownsville. Done on this, the 26th day of June 2007, signed by Mr. Pat Almada, Mayor of Brownsville and City Commission.
She's a very classy lady who really gave her heart for Brownsville. Give her a hand.
Thank you very, very much. And once again, just very briefly, my very best congratulations to the mayor, to the new city commissioner. It was an overwhelming honor for me to serve the citizens of Brownsville and I'm just very proud of everything I did. And I'm leaving the city knowing it's in very good hands. A wonderful commissioner is replacing me and I have the highest expectations of all of you.
Thank you Commissioner, thank you. God bless you. City Secretary, we have one more?
We have one more. Mr. Ernie Hernandez was not available today, but would you like for me to read the proclamation?
Would you please, for the record? Thank you Mayor.
A proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, commanding, commending Ernie L. Hernandez Jr. for his service on the Brownsville City Commission. Whereas Ernie L. Hernandez Jr. has amassed a near 14-year record of public service to the city and the citizens of Brownsville, and whereas Ernie L. Hernandez Jr. served on the Brownsville City Commission from November 1991 through May 1994, and from May 1995 through May of 1999, continuing through 2003, and most recently as City Commissioner at Large B from May 2005 through May of 2007. And whereas Ernie L. Hernandez Jr. deserves the thanks and gratitude from a grateful city and is hereby commended for his time, energy, and effort dedicated to his city. Now therefore, we the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby recognize and thank Ernie L. Hernandez Jr. for his contributions to our city and for the work he did on behalf of all the people of Brownsville. Done on this, the 26th day of June 2007, signed by Mayor Pat Almada, Brownsville, Texas, and the rest of the city commission.
City Secretary, we make sure he gets it. I want my heartfelt thanks to him for serving our city on behalf of the citizens of Brownsville and myself. Thank you. I'm going to get out of the ordinary right now. I would like to have my family come forward over here, all my family. Would you please come forward? And Judge, would you do me the honor? I'd like to take a picture with you there. And the Mayor Matamoros, Batasada Enojosa, would you please come forward also? And the consulate, they honor me by being here and I really appreciate because we have a lot of work ahead to do, to do here for Brownsville and with our neighbors. I'd like to have him here with me. They honor me by accepting my invitation to come and it's a great pleasure to have I want to thank all my supporters and everyone that got involved with the election for making this possible. It was a grueling campaign and the citizens honored me with this honor of electing me as our mayor and that's about the highest honor any citizen can receive. And I want to thank you for those who. And I wanna thank you for those who came here to witness my swearing-in, I wanna thank all those who could not make it for making it possible. It's time to unite our city, to work to make it better. No swearing-in or election would be complete without a speech, so I think I'm obligated to give a speech, and I hope you'll bear with me. This is my message to you, the citizens. I sought the office of mayor with a purpose, the purpose was to serve the citizens of Brownsville to the best of my ability. Electing a mayor is the highest honor the citizens of Brownsville can bestow on a fellow citizen. I humbly accept this honor and responsibility. As your mayor, I have the responsibility to bring transparency to city government, I also have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure your resources are used wisely. I have an ethical responsibility to uphold the highest standard when it comes to city business, and I have the responsibility to bring accountability to city government. I accept this responsibility and ask my colleagues on the City Commission to do the same. The mayor's authority is not as great as his responsibility, but with community support and volunteers, we will get many things done for the greater good of Brownsville. Expectations of a mayor can sometimes exceed his authority, especially when the mayor's not providing the resources to get the job done. I will do the best I can under the circumstances and ask for your patience when I do not return your call as soon as I would have liked to. I may only have one vote on the City Commission, but I bring experience and I pray for wisdom to guide the City Commission on its decision-making to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Brownsville. I have a duty to set the pace and direction for the next four years that Brownsville will take. I ask for unity to face the many challenges Brownsville will be facing during the next four years. To be negative without offering alternatives to overcome our challenges is to want Brownsville to fail. I ask my fellow citizens to support me in my efforts to lead Brownsville in a positive direction by getting involved and by holding us on the commission to a higher standard, with an emphasis to agree to disagree respectfully, to vote on the issues facing Brownsville based on the merits, to leave all pettiness outside the commission chamber doors, and to be proactive and not reactive to the many challenges Brownsville will be facing. The people's vote spoke and resonated with a need for a positive change to move Brownsville forward. Already good citizens have volunteered to ensure my campaign promises will come to fruition. At this time, I would like to introduce my team of volunteers who have agreed to take on different tasks and responsibilities at no cost to the city. I would like to introduce my economic advisor, Dr. Rafael Otero, would you please come forward, please? Rafael and I go back quite a few years, please stand over here. Dr. Otero, I call him Rafael, but it is Dr. Otero. We go back quite a few years, and he loves Brownsville. He has committed to prepare an economic index study for Brownsville that will use variables to measure Brownsville's economic growth to better understand our growth and plan for economic development to improve the quality of life and create jobs. The variables he will use will include building permit valuations, hotel taxes, sales taxes, growth in our utilities. This is a very complex undertaking and very costly. He's doing it out of his own heart, free for the city, to help us with economic development, to help us learn where our strengths and our weaknesses are to improve and create jobs for Brownsville citizens. The next one, volunteer is Dr. Sandra Garcia. Is she here? Dr. Sandra, please come forward. Dr. Garcia will be heading my ECO team to interconnect regional assets and form partnerships for ecological development consisting of recycling, Resaca restoration, clean renewable energy resources, and work with others to realize a botanical garden for Brownsville that was expressed to me during the campaign. Marine Marien is not here, but Arturo Trevino, are you here, Arturo Trevino? Please go forward. Marine Marien and Arturo Trevino, a friend and also a volunteer for the city to serve as mayor, who will be the liaison between Brownsville and Mexico and regional projects like the Weir Project and our international relationships. I asked Mr. Trevino to contact the mayor from Matamoros and the consulate. These are the kind of people we need to serve the citizens who are elected to get things done, and I appreciate that kind of volunteerism to bring people together for the better good of the region and the city of Brownsville and Matamoros, because we're joined at the hip. Adolfo Pereira, Raymond Josa, and Oscar Cavazos, are you here? Okay, would you please come forward? Some of the volunteers are not here for whatever reason, but Mr. Pereira, Raymond Josa, and Oscar Cavazos have undertaken the responsibility to organize meetings and events for me. As mayor, you're being asked to be here and there, you don't have time to schedule, you don't have time to see what's going on, you have to depend on someone to keep you focused on what needs to be done and where you need to be and have events and stuff like that. Mr. Pereira and these individuals have taken that responsibility. My good friends, Dennis Sanchez and Ray Lopez, are you here? Ray Lopez, would you please come forward? Ray Lopez is not new to this, he was part of my team on the first term in the early 90s. He was my liaison then, he will be my liaison now on business and political matters, such a valuable asset to have as mayor. I would like, at this time, I would like to invite Lavis Laney, Jim Rose if he's here, Jackie Byrd, Julie Haley, Dee Lebinski, are you here? And anybody with the pet rescue, come forward, please. Those with the pet rescue, come forward. Pessy, Saliento, thank you for coming. They will be part of the mayor's domesticated pet rescue program and make the necessary recommendations to hopefully implement a no-kill policy for Brownsville in the near future. Domesticated pets are living creatures with feelings and a dependence upon us for care, protection, and love. Euthanasia should be the last resort in dealing with the problems at our city dog pound. We as a community should do everything possible to formulate a plan that adopts pet out to responsible families and educate the public on pet ownership and the importance to spay and neuter pets. I'm asking the City of Brownsville to implement a process with a criteria and a process to be overseen by people who want us to succeed as a no-kill community. In order to accomplish this, some of the recommendations made by me are as follows. We should not be quick to pick up pets and euthanize them three days later. Instead, we should enforce leash laws, cite and find those who sell pets on street corners, regulate breeders, and ban the sale of dogs and cats at the flea market. We must adopt a plan to educate BISD children and the public the importance of spaying and neutering their pets. I want us to introduce a plan that allows foster care of pets to prevent overcrowding in our local dog pound. We must introduce ways to raise funds to succeed, there are grants for cities with no-kill policies. I would like the City Commission to approve a proposal that will provide a dollar for cultural events, a dollar for public safety equipment, ambulances and the such, and a dollar to help make Brownsville a no-kill community through our PUB bill. This will ensure those areas that are in much need of funding get funding without raising property taxes. Pets that are picked up and not a danger to our community should be released to their owner with a warning on the first offense. We should take the time to educate everyone that comes to pick up their pet on their responsibility not to let their pet run loose. Instead of charging a high fine or fee to adopt a pet, we should give pets away instead of euthanizing them. My platform for a better Brownsville consisted of selling bonds to address our drainage problems and to continue with a plan to build streets. I want to unite Brownsville to start a Resaca Restoration project to stop the killing of 7,000 pets annually at our dog pound, to meet public safety needs and to build a Westside Library. I ask my fellow commissioners and our city manager to submit a list of what they would like to see get done in the next four years. By each of us submitting a list, we can formulate a plan together with oversight and accountability to get things done to improve Brownsville. And with that, my friends, I thank you, and I humbly am blessed to be here as your mayor. I ask for your support and your guidance and your prayers. Thank you very much. The important thing is to have an understanding amongst the commissioners and myself that as passionate as we may be about an issue, to agree to disagree respectfully. I hope to unite our city even in spite of disagreements, we must move forward because if we fail, the city fails. City Secretary, would you read the next item, please?
Item number four, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint three members and one alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Commission.
Ben?
Go ahead. Please. Anybody have a list or suggestion, I mean, here?
Mayor, if I may just interject real quick before Ben does come up, one of the things, one of the things I think that is important to note when it comes to any nomination or the future nomination, I don't know if the rest of you all will agree, I'd like to see if Commissioner Troyani and I were discussing a possible application process to begin for future nominations on all boards by this commission. We wanna bring transparency to city government and it's important that we know who is actually gonna get appointed to every single board that we have the opportunity to help govern and oversee. I think it's important that we look at all of our appointees so we know who they are, their backgrounds, and if they're willing to serve in the capacities, then it wouldn't be, I don't think there'd be any other issue. With that said, I would like to table the nomination for P&amp;Z Commissioners so that we may possibly consider and review an application process similar to what the governor of Texas utilizes for his appointees. I'd be happy to pass out some of that information for each of us to consider, but that's my recommendation if we wish to have a little bit more clarity when it comes to our appointments, not just for P&amp;Z, not just for PUB, but for the rest of our, and the remainder of our committees that we oversee.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any more comments?
I agree with Commissioner Camarillo, I think it's important, I had actually talked to, I think Larry Brown, we had a brief conversation that we should ask for resumes of people that were already on boards so we could get them, to know them better, if they weren't appointed by this commission, past commissions, and it's just bringing transparency to the city of Brownsville, so I don't know, that's a motion, Commissioner?
I'd like to make a motion.
It's a discussion right now.
I have a, I have a comment to make, and it'll just be brief. This transparency should have been looked at before. You bring it up now, when we go into a new leadership, and that's fine, but before, when there was a different commission and there was a different majority, you had no problem with transparency, you had no problem with appointees, and now all of a sudden, in the risk of there being, you know, maybe a lack of a second or for a nomination, we seek new policy. I'm just, me personally, when I make an appointment to a board, I study that person and I have all the confidence that that person that I'm going to appoint onto that board has my trust, and therefore that is why that person is my appointment. So it strikes me as odd that you would bring up this kind of a policy now when we're about to make important appointments to the city.
We had some discussion here, there is a motion on the table, does somebody want a second, you got a second?
Mayor, hold on one moment, my, my, my comment to that is the following, that my position today, we bring new change, changes on us right now, and so therefore, for this appointment and future appointments, I think it's important that although I may have a vote, I may have my appointment, and you may not have that, out of my respect for you to consider, these are the applicants, or these are the appointments I'd like to make, and I think it'd be fair and just that we know who the individual is.
Commissioner, I don't-
In case I'm not aware of an appoint, a candidate you wish to appoint, I think it's important that I know them, I wanna feel as comfortable as you are so that we can make a good decision, whether it's P&amp;Z, PUB, beautification, we all need to be on the same page.
Commissioner, I think, I think the issues were already well noted, there's some that want to submit a list and there's some that don't. We have a motion to do that and a second, let's have a vote, if the majority decides with it, then go that way, if it doesn't, doesn't. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, a table in this, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all against?
Aye.
So there's a tie?
Yes.
Okay, I'm against it. I think the appointment should be based on the relationship we have with people in the community who wanna serve and express that desire. I think, I think that's what it is, okay. And not, not to say that, that your point is not well taken, but that's how I feel, that's the way it was done when I was here, and it worked good. Okay, let's move to the next item, please.
I think though the issue is how it was done, the issue is transparency.
The table is not too, not too, I mean, the, it did not get tabled, so do we have a list for members to be appointed?
He has, who's up for appointment right now?
Yes, Honorable Mayor Almada and Honorable Commissioner, tonight we have three members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Leonel Rosales, which he does not wish to continue to serve, Mr. Jose Alban, he does not wish to continue to serve, he has resigned, Mr. Troy Whittimore, he's in the Planning and Zoning Commission, he completed his first term, he does wanna continue to serve. Also, the Planning and Zoning Commission, since they consider Platts outside the city of Brownsville, under the state code, we have to have a member on the Planning and Zoning Commission that's an alternate that has to reside outside the city limits of Brownsville, and that was, Mr. Ray Lopez was, was that member. So tonight, we do have two members, two vacancies, which is Mr. Rosales vacancy, Mr. Galvan, Mr. Whittimore does wanna continue to serve at your discretion, and Mr. Lopez, which is an alternate member residing outside the city limits.
Mayor, I wish to reappoint my nominee, Mr. Troy Whittimore, to a second term.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No abstentions?
Mayor, I'd like to make-
Unanimous, okay.
I'd like to make another appointment.
Well, Mayor, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I don't know if that's your appointment or not for P&amp;Z Commissioner, well, I wanna make my appointment then as Ricardo Filozola for my, for, to replace Mr. Leonel Rosales.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Of, of who?
Who?
Ricardo Filozola.
Okay.
That's my, that's my candidate.
Okay, he's got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the nomination's-
Appointment of Mr. David Pauline.
David Pauline? Okay, have these people been contacted and they-
There are some of them that are here.
Okay. There's a motion for David Pauline?
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Nay.
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 Three nays and four ayes, okay.
Who are the nays, please? Besides Mr. Camarillo?
Commissioner, City Secretary, we're gonna do this a little differently, for the future, each agenda item is listed, and then please tabulate each vote, so make sure that you record who, how they voted.
Oh, yes.
That way we post them on the website, how they voted on each issue, all of us, okay?
And for the record, for the record-
I still bring transparency, okay?
For the record, I just wanna add, the only reason, I did not vote nay against the person, I voted because I think it was Commissioner Camarillo's appointee.
And I feel that, I, again, I don't think we've ever had that happen.
Yes, it happened to me when I came on. It was done, it was already, Commissioner, like I said, it was already taken care of, okay, let's move on. Any other appointment?
Yes, I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner?
Mariano Garcia, he's a realtor in Brownsville, I've known him for a long time, he's a man of integrity, he's honest, and I think he'll do a great job for the Brownsville Planning and Zoning, so I would like to recommend and make a motion to be appoint Mariano Garcia.
We have a motion, a second for Mariano Garcia on the P&amp;Z, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Commissioner, you're for, I guess you-
I said aye.
Aye? Everybody's aye? Okay, unanimous then, that's great, we got one unanimous, thank you. Okay. Those are the three appointments, congratulations.
I think we have the, we have an alternate that has to reside outside the city of Brownsville.
Are they ETJ, okay.
Is he willing to, Mr. Ray Lopez?
No, he does not.
Let me, I may, so everybody knows why I can't, you know, I served in that, in that capacity, and obviously I enjoyed it tremendously, but I'm also a director of Magic Valley and also a director of apartment in San Antonio, so my schedule is a little bit tight, and so that's one of the reasons that I stepped down, although I appreciate you know that.
Thank you for serving, Mr.-
And Mr. Lopez, you've been a valuable asset to this community in your service, and thank you.
We can come back-
We can come back at the next meeting later. You all can look at, look for names.
Can I have a motion to table this one?
Last appointment?
Motion.
Alternate?
Yeah.
I'll second.
We have a motion to table this, a second?
Right here. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, carries, okay. Item five, City Secretary. Thank you, Joe.
Item five, consideration in action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Public Utilities Board.
This is very, a very special appointment to me, and I'm going to tell you why. Because the man who appointed me to PUB Board has made it possible for me to be here, and I think he also, Brownsville owes him a lot. His heart is in Brownsville. He's a great man. I, I look up to him because he's honest, he's beyond reproach, he has integrity, and he wants the best for Brownsville. He appointed me, that's Dr. Joseph Savaleta, he appointed me to the PUB Board, and a lot of things came out with that appointment, and I think the community is better for it, and we are moving forward, and positive things are happening. This appointment will be taking my place on the PUB Board, and I would like the commission to give me the courtesy to make that appointment, because he's going to be filling my shoes. And I can't think of no other better person than Dr. Savaleta, because when people said that the, we, we didn't have the highest rates in the, in the region, we, we proved that they were. But he knew something was wrong with PUB, and when he appointed me, he told me, Pat, I don't know what's wrong, but I want you to find out and correct it. And it's that kind of leadership that was willing to stand up and, and make, bring change that, that I'm very proud to associate myself with. His son is here, Peter, and Dr. Joe Savaleta, and they have every reason to be proud of their father. Dr. Savaleta himself is not here, he's, he's traveling, but I know his heart is here in Brownsville, and I, I know he wished to be here. So I would like that courtesy from my commission to, to appoint Dr. Savaleta.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I just wanted to add, I don't disagree with anything you say. I just think this position on the PUB Board is a real big decision for the citizens of Brownsville. I think it was a little bit rushed, and I'm not ready to vote yea or nay, so I'd abstain on that.
You can abstain, that's fine. That's appreciated. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm going to abstain. One of the issues that we had talked about before was the application process so that we could have people who were apolitical that would be neutral in the process, and for those reasons, I will abstain from this vote. One of the big things that I think we do need to have is like many other communities have, is an application where we can review appointees and see who are those people who want to serve and the basis for that.
Commissioner, we already went through that.
Making a comment, and I'm saying.
That issue is not appropriate at this time, because I mean, we.
Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and abstain as well. Again, nothing against the candidate. I, I feel strongly PUB is extremely important to the city, city of Brownsville, and we shouldn't take the positions very lightly, and again, I, I feel that again, some of these things have been rushed, and so I will abstain.
Okay, so we have three abstentions and three, how are you voting?
I, I just want to make a comment that this item was put on the agenda by me. I asked it to be put on, and I, I defer, I defer this to, to the mayor as a courtesy, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. And that's what I asked for, the courtesy to allow me to make this appointment, because I'm appointing my successor, and I want to thank everybody who made it possible, and those who abstain, I understand too. Appreciate it, thank you. Please convey our best wishes to your data. He may, he may not like me for doing this afterwards. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't think we had the vote taken. Did we take that vote?
Yeah, we took the vote.
Okay. And the ayes were the?
The ayes prevail, okay? Item six, please.
Item six, consideration in action to appoint a mayor pro temp and a deputy mayor pro temp to the Brownsville City Commission.
This is the mayor's appointment, and nothing against anybody, they're all good here. They all want to give their time to Brownsville, and, and it's appreciated. I'm going to appoint a, a good friend and a neighbor of mine also, that I feel that I can work very well with and depend on him to be where I need to be when I can't be, and take care of some of those things, and I can just walk two houses down and, and tell them, hey, I need you to cover this, maybe at midnight or three o'clock in the morning, whatever. So there's that kind of relationship, and based on that, I, I, I'm going to appoint Charlie Atkinson as my mayor pro temp. And Ricardo De Jorsa is the mayor, deputy mayor.
Longoria.
Longoria, I'm sorry. Rick Longoria is deputy mayor. Thank you. Appreciate it, gentlemen. I know we're going to do good things. Okay, item seven, please.
Did we get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Item seven?
Item seven.
Consideration in action to appoint members to the Airport Advisory Board.
We're going to table this one?
Whatever the wishes of the commission is.
No one's up for reappointment?
No one's up, but there's other things that we're working on there, so we're going to have to table this right now.
Okay, we have a motion to table?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes carries. Item eight?
Item eight, consideration in action to appoint members to the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee.
Okay, this is important. Chris, we have a party at 7:30 at VICC for those who can make it, okay? Thank you. To celebrate, to celebrate. It's a new beginning here. There's been a lot of divisiveness, and I think by bringing in a fresh start to the kayak committee is a positive way to move forward, so I think this is a good item on the agenda. Do you have anybody in mind?
I have a motion, Karen Ballard.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Karen Ballard.
The Commissioner wishes to.
Commissioner Goss, trying to interrupt you.
Can you hold your motion a minute, please?
I have a question, this is more for our legal counsel. Mr. Goza, can the city commission replace, as of this point, its members on the kayak when there's a standing kayak already?
I just happen to be looking at that, and yes, sir, you can. It requires a majority vote of the city commissioner, mayor, and commissioners. There's a requirement in section 395 of the Texas Government Code that requires there to be forty percent of the kayak taken from.
Real estate.
Yes, sir. Real estate, building, or representatives associated with development or building industries.
And I stated, this is a new kayak committee, so, okay, so we're, we're in compliance.
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a motion for Karen Ballard. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, who, Mr. Troyani abstains?
I'm going to abstain. I, I still have questions regarding the charter, Jim, regarding if that's, if we, we're going to, are we removing every single individual from the kayak, Mayor? Is that?
Yes.
Is the kayak is redone?
It's a new kayak committee.
Okay, so it's been undone?
That's right. Okay, would you like to vote yes or no? So we have three abstentions. Okay, it passes. Do we have, we, do, there's, there's, how many members are there going to be on there?
Seven. I'd like to appoint Kiko Rendon.
Can you just make a list? Do you have a list?
Yeah.
Okay, who, who?
We don't, we don't.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Rick Zayas again.
And I'd like to nominate Marcus Barza.
Okay, well, we, we got two nominations here. Okay.
Rick Zayas was mine first.
Well, he had, he had his first, okay?
I'd like to nominate.
He was, he was on the, okay?
Kiko Rendon.
Kiko Rendon? Okay, but do you have any more all at once? You want to take care of all at once?
No.
Okay.
One at a time.
One at a time? Okay, Kiko Rendon, we have a motion?
I second that motion.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Please make, because it's hard for me to say, please say yes or no or abstain, okay?
It's aye.
Okay, so it passes, okay?
Rick Zayas, I'd like to nominate Rick Zayas.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for Rick Zayas? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Done, carry. Do we have another one?
Mark Esparza.
Second.
Mark Esparza.
Mark Esparza, okay, we have a motion, a second for Mark Esparza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
I abstain. You abstain.
So it's a dice. Dice for, for lack of a majority. Okay.
There were three ayes.
There was three ayes and.
Who is Mark Esparza? May I ask?
There was three nays.
It should carry, no?
I need to have the nays on this. Who were the nays for?
Leo.
Is this Dino Espasas' brother?
Yes.
I don't know, I know Dino Espasas, I don't know the young man.
So is that a aye or?
I abstain.
So the a's carry?
We've got three yeses.
Okay, so you got, you got, what's his name?
Commissioner Cisneros?
No, I was an a.
Okay.
I was in favor.
So just two people?
So what's his name again?
Three a's.
Marcus Barza. I have an abstention by Commissioner Longoria and Commissioner Garza. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'd like to point.
I abstain in favor.
Why don't you just name the names?
Dennis Sanchez.
In favor, Stella.
Leanne Greer and Mr. Galansky.
Okay, we got Dennis Sanchez, Leanne Greer, and Mr. Galansky. That's who you want to point, okay?
Oh, no, how many are there right now?
You're saying the names that are.
No, hold on. Go ahead.
Those are existing on the list.
How, how many does that make?
That's two, Mayor.
That's two.
Two for, so far.
Okay, so is, Mr. Galansky?
No. We only have Ms. Karen Ballard and Ms., and Mr. Kiko Rendon.
No, but he made, he made a motion right now, he went.
This for Dennis Sanchez right now.
Dennis Sanchez?
Marcus Barza.
No, he, you are the order. Who, who are you making the motion for?
Dennis Sanchez.
Okay, we have a motion for Dennis Sanchez?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I voted aye. Okay, so he carries. You voted aye, right? Okay.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Mateo Salas.
Mateo Salas? Okay, you have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain?
I have, may I, please?
Yes.
I have one, I'd like to.
Commissioner, we're not done with this.
Okay.
How's your vote? How's your vote?
Yes.
Okay, done.
He got him, Stella?
Yes, I have.
Is there any more, is there any more appointments to this?
So far, how many do we have?
That makes four.
No, that's.
You have Ballard, you have Kiko Rendon, you have Zayas.
No.
Yes.
No, you don't have a Zayas.
Cisneros and Troyani, Zayas.
And it passed.
No.
No, it didn't pass. No, it didn't.
Marcus Barza passed, not Zayas.
Marcus Barza passed.
Rick Zayas did too.
You did not vote on Rick Zayas?
Rick Zayas did not pass.
Okay, well, can I get a, who voted against Rick Zayas?
I did.
Who else? Uh, Ms. Commissioner Garza?
He voted against.
Rick Zayas, yes.
In favor or against?
In favor.
Okay.
So two nays for Rick Zayas?
If four.
That's four.
Four nays?
Or?
Or yeas?
Okay, so Rick Zayas is in. Okay, it's okay, it's okay. Okay, so do we have anybody else?
You have Mateo Salas.
Again.
Second that.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Mike Garza.
Mike Garza?
Yeah.
Okay, there's, there's a motion for Mike Garza in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Aye.
If there's two nays and three yeas and one abstention, what does that give us?
It wouldn't pass.
It doesn't pass? If, and if the yeas take it?
Do we have another?
You have to have a majority. And the mayor can vote.
I'd like to point you...
The mayor can vote as well.
Jim, does that pass or doesn't it pass?
Does not pass.
I'm sorry, I'm a little dizzy.
The three yays supersede the two nays?
It's two, Jim.
You're dizzy.
It has to be a majority of the quorum present. If there's seven members present, it has to be a majority of the seven.
And the quorum is four to three.
I'd like to nominate Eugene Novogratki.
I'm sorry, Eugene Novogratki? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Aye.
I abstain.
Aye.
Aye, it said it passed.
I have one. May I?
Of course.
Arnold Kane?
Ruben Rodriguez is a counselor with the Brownsville Independent School District. A very astute man, and I'd like to recommend...
Second. Before we do that, do we have... How many people do we have with real estate backgrounds? Because weren't we actually supposed to have forty percent?
I was gonna ask that question.
Forty percent have to be...
Yeah.
But we don't know...
From these people, we don't know.
Galansky did not get on there, right?
We don't know what some of these people do, so...
Barza's in real estate.
Arnold Galansky was nominated, wasn't he?
He was nominated, but they didn't vote on him.
No, not when we did it one by one, he wasn't.
We have left.
Mostly all of them are real estate, I think.
Okay, why...
Are developers.
Would the commission give me one appointment out of this?
Real estate development and building industry.
Estella, for the record.
Joe, give me one appointment.
Ruben...
Withdraw your motion.
Ruben Rodriguez is my choice.
There's a motion for Ruben Rodriguez, right, you said?
Yeah, Ruben Rodriguez. He's a counselor for BISD. I believe he works at Pace.
Is he in... I mean, are we in compliance with real estate background?
No.
No. I don't think he is. I think we need a Realtor or somebody that's been in real estate. So, would you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion and appoint...
Clarification?
Excuse me.
Some clarification, because it was my understanding that forty percent of the kayak committee needed to be comprised of real estate or real estate-related professionals. Is that correct, Mr. Goza?
Yes, sir.
A minimum of forty percent.
So, a minimum of forty percent, which would mean that would be the minimum. So, sixty percent could be from any other field. Is that correct, Mr. Goza?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I made a motion to appoint Aubran Galansky to the kayak committee.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, okay? How many more do we need?
Mayor, to comply with state law, I nominate Ms. Nora Pampa.
Nora Pampa, okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I just want a clarification as... How does that comply, or what is...
Because she is a Realtor.
She is a Realtor?
Yes.
As is Marcus Barza. Okay.
That's fine. Okay? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll get the hang of it. Okay? Item nine?
Item nine, consideration and action to reactivate the charter review committee and appoint or reappoint members to the charter review committee.
Okay. This is just to reactivate the existing committee, let them come together, and we'll have some workshops to hear from citizens, see what the kind of changes they would like to see in the charter. Because I know they express some concerns about the benefits and stuff like that, so I would like to reactivate this committee, get it started, have the meeting, and have a workshop.
Is there gonna be proposed agenda for this new committee?
Well, we gotta reactivate the committee, have a workshop to where citizens can come in and say what they would like to see, including yourself. You can submit a list of what you would like to see, if any, in the charter changes.
So, at this point, this is simply a...
Reactivation.
Reactivation, and there's no planned agenda, there's no items that we're doing this for?
No. They got... You gotta bring them into...
When you reactivate something, it's because you have a reason that you want to reactivate it.
They've been dormant. They've been dormant. I don't think they've made in a year. Is that right? Or two years?
I'd have to go back and look, Mayor. I will mention that because one item from our previous charter election did pass, we can't have another charter election.
Two years.
Two years, yes.
But by the time we get it all done, it might be time to... Yeah, that we can do it. That's the purpose of it. Just to reactivate it, make sure citizens expressed to me, and I know to many of you during the campaign, that they had concerns on the benefits and other things that they would like to be addressed in the charter. So, that doesn't mean we support it or against it. It just means let's get the input and give the citizens the opportunity to come forward and say, okay, I would like to see this changed or I would not. I would like to make the mayor ex-official, non-voting member on the PB board. That's what I would like to see done. That's taking power away from the mayor, which I'm willing to relinquish to protect PB in the future.
I guess my proposal would be that we have a form or that we have, you know, public comment before we decide to reactivate a charter committee where we really don't have a purpose for it. If you want to have a form first and go forward and see if there are issues that need to be addressed. I know that there's already pending litigation, and I believe a number of us campaigned on the issue of, you know, we're getting ten dollars and that's it, and we don't want the rest of the benefits. So, given that circumstance, I would suggest that we table this issue until we actually have a plan in place for what we want to do with the charter committee.
Okay, a good... Well, point taken, but this is my point. I would like to see... I personally, doesn't mean that that's what the voters will decide on. I would like to reactivate the charter committee, and I would like some of the input that I heard from my constituents was term limits for the mayor and city commission, which I think is healthy. It ensures new blood comes through here. And making the mayor ex-official at the PB board where there's no gridlock, as it was before. The benefits, healthcare coverage for city commission, stuff like that, to where there's no ambiguity, and it's addressed by a charter change. I don't think... I don't think that's bad. I think it's good, give the citizens the opportunity to at least get started in the discussion and the debate of it. And I think it brings transparency to city government and make sure that their voices are being heard. So, I'm making the motion to reactivate it at this time. We have a second?
I'll abstain due to pending litigation on that.
That's fine. Okay, you got one abstention. Okay, all in favor?
I'm gonna abstain.
All in favor?
Actually, I would move to table it, because that's just the whole issue.
Actually, that was a motion I had tabled. I had seconded it, but we would recommend...
So, I think we should do that.
Okay, you have a motion before here to table. Okay, let's have a motion table. You have your second, the motion table, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
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 Okay, I make the motion to reactivate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I abstain.
Two abstains, three abstentions?
Who abstands?
Thank you. Okay.
I think Estella did...
Let's go to the next item. Public hearing.
I don't have all the abstentions.
Are we gonna make our appointments?
Appointment?
The abstentions on the...
No, it's gonna reactivate the existing committee. It's gonna reactivate... He's got a list. I don't even know who's on the list. To be honest, I don't know. But I'm relying that they have had the experience, and if we don't feel comfortable, we can come back and change it.
We don't know who's on the list. We don't know what the agenda is, and we're...
But I have the...
But if you react it, it opens up everything. We can... It's a positive move.
This has been settled. We move on, okay? Let's go to...
I'm sorry, Mayor. The only concern was we didn't get... Estella wasn't able to get the abstentions. We didn't, for the record, understand exactly.
Abstain.
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 Three abstentions.
Mayor, one question, if I may ask, real quick, and we'll move on. If we dissolved the kayak, we appointed new members, what's any difference from dissolving the charter review committee and have new members?
Because, Commissioner, each agenda item is different, and it's a consensus of the commission. You may be on the winning side, or you may be winning on the losing side. In that instance, we wanted to start afresh, because we felt, some of us felt that it was too divisive, and we need to start with new people in there. On this one, people feel comfortable on this board to reactivate and find out what's there.
So, we know that the members feel very confident that they want to remain on the charter review committee?
I trust. They've been through this before. I trust they are. But if we see a problem, we can always come back and say, hey, we're gonna reappoint somebody else.
Okay.
Very simply done.
Yeah.
Okay? Okay, the next item, City Secretary?
Item ten.
Thank you for being patient, Mayor.
Item ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and seven dash thirteen eighty-seven dash B. Amending ordinance number two thousand and seven dash thirteen eighty-seven dash A to amend section three thirty-eight dash thirty-five approval procedures. B, application requirements number three.
Okay, this is a first reading?
In layman's terms?
Charter.
This is a public hearing.
What exactly are we looking at, Commissioner?
He's gonna find... He'll find out.
Mr. Gamas will address that, though.
And, Mayor, it is a public hearing, as you know.
This is a motion to open to public hearing?
This is a public hearing.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission. Last time we were here, we did amend it, the section of the ordinance. Section three thirty-five thirty-eight, and it was the word required, and it was removed, and it was allowed, was placed in there. Now, we have rewritten that section. And if I may, I can go ahead and read it. It says, "In order to preserve and the safe and orderly placement of town locations, the city of Brownsville requires that applicants seeking to install a WCF give first priority to the city-owned property. If there is not a space available on city-owned property as required by applicable federal law, then applicants can seek approval for installation of the WCF on property not owned by the city." Just for the information, I did call the city of San Antonio. In the city of San Antonio, there's a little bit over of seven hundred wireless communication towers. Of those towers, thirty-five are installed or built on city property. I did talk... Spoke with Oscar Serrano, which is in charge of the inspections Department in San Antonio. And then he did say that they do offer city property to be placed on those towers. If they do that, they get incentives such as the colocations. And some companies do build their towers. If it's a package, let me explain on that. The package is that if they build those towers, they get the city permit. They also get the lease from the city instead of... And they exempt the middleman, which is the private owner. So, there's, you know, what offers that the municipality has to do that. Also, we have fifty-five towers here in Brownsville. Out of those fifty-five towers that are placed here in Brownsville, I believe there's only one that is on city property. And that's the extent.
That's the gist of it? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there any discussion? Anybody against it?
I have a question for Mr. Gamas. Mr. Gamas, did staff seek to inquire this change, or how did this all come about? And why did it come about now and not a week, two meetings ago or three meetings ago? Were you or has your staff made discussions saying, we want to change this?
I...
I'm asking Mr. Gamas.
Yeah, but I'm gonna answer, because I requested it.
Well, hold on. I'm asking Mr. Gamas.
That's the answer.
Mr. Gamas?
I was the... Yes, the...
Commissioner?
Commissioner Atkinson.
I don't want anybody to be afraid to bring anything to the table that thinks that they could make Brownsville better, and I don't want no staff to be afraid to answer either. Excuse me, Mr. Gamas. Every commissioner has the right to bring anything to the table for consideration, and they should be judged based on its merits, okay? But no staff should be afraid to follow through and bring it up here. So, Mr. Gamas, please have that assurance, okay?
Okay, I guess. I was called by Commissioner Atkinson, and then I did go to get the legal advice from Mr. Jim Goza.
Okay.
Let me say something real quick. I put it on this because back when we first voted on it, I felt the citizens of Brownsville were duped. I put it back on it, because this is what's best for the city. How's the city gonna ever generate money? We need to be able to stand alone, so we don't have to raise taxes. City, to say the city cannot make money is totally wrong. And last time when it came up, you know, obviously, we didn't get the majority vote to go against it. It went through. And I felt like, you know what? This is time to give back to the citizens their city. You know? Before we raise taxes, we want to see the city is obligated to make money. It imposes restrictions on... Where you can't just put a tower anywhere like you can. The city has to be notified where these towers are gonna go. You know, it's not fair that some people buy a house, tear it down, put a tower in there between two houses. It's wrong.
Commissioner, as part of the ordinance, it's already stated.
Let's have some order here. Let's have some order. Let me recognize the speaker.
My question is, is this put on, because it could have been passed before, and now it's...
Commissioner, Commissioner.
Oh, I don't...
That's the way it's...
Everybody wants to speak at the same time. Let me recognize the speaker, and before we have chaos here, okay? Commissioner Camarilla, you wanted to say something?
Commissioner Atkinson, I have no problem with the city trying to improve its economic status. I mean, that, you know, that's important. Nobody wants to raise any taxes. Again, we're not gonna become, you know, the towers of cities, but, you know, there was regulation in place to deal with that. They still had to come to the city. But I guess, you know, back when we did vote on it, well, who's the city to say, well, you need to build it on our property? I mean, why are we gonna do that to somebody? Why are we gonna tell them, you need to do this? We implemented a fee, if you remember. We implemented a fee for them, but not everybody else we did we implement a fee from. But couldn't we make more money off of everybody else if we implemented a fee, just like we did for the towers? We sure could, but we don't do that. So, I mean, based on fairness, is it fair just to do it for the towers when I do it for everybody else?
We're following San Antonio.
Commissioner, Commissioner, let's let him have his turn.
And that's my point.
Point well taken, okay, Commissioner? Commissioner Troyani wants to say something?
Questions?
Sure.
When was this last voted on?
The second reading was passed, if I'm not mistaken, on May the twentieth of two thousand and seven.
So, on May the twentieth, two thousand and seven, is this as is the ordinance was passed?
Correct.
Okay, so now we're on... Today, we're trying to come back and switch that around.
We're just trying to rework that section. Correct.
And so, my next question is, the wording before was, would allow to be placed on city property, and now it shall be placed on city property. How is the wording specific?
Do you have any packet, Commissioner?
Go ahead, Jim.
I think Mr. Gamas is looking to me for...
Okay.
From help. It's in our packet.
I have it right here.
Yes, sir. It's highlighted the section that we're... That... Everesto had discussed with me passing. And the effort was to try to make it a first priority to put it on city property. Federal law, Federal Communications Commission will not allow us to prevent a tower from going in where it's just because of the technology where it's required in order to provide service to a certain... Within a certain service area. The towers have to overlap, or they can't... Federal law will allow us to some restrictions, but we cannot prevent it from going in where, just because of the technology, in an area it needs to be because of the technology in order to transmit the signal.
Now, additionally, isn't the location of towers restricted by zoning?
It was not before.
To some extent, it is. You couldn't... That would be, yes.
Correct.
Okay, and so, you've already got regulations as far as zoning as to where they go. Why, and I guess, for those who want to change this ordinance that was passed back in May, why are we going to basically have a monopoly for the city on placement of these towers and cut out small business from being able to, you know, have a shot or at least be able to compete with the city for rental and use it as a tower service? Why are we gonna do that, or why would we want to do that?
I think it would be a policy decision to be made by the company.
That's up to the commission to decide whether they want to do it or not.
Well, and I guess the quick... I would have his comment, because obviously, this was just recently voted on. Now, we're back trying to change this. What is the actual income that we're gonna receive? Is there a benefit based on the restriction? I think we'd want to promote small business growth.
The argument I would make, in the event that it were challenged, which it could be, would be that if it is located on city property, that we would have immediate and unfettered access to it in the event of a natural disaster or some sort of a national emergency. But the countervailing argument to that would be that we would be restricting business and that the Federal Communications Commission does place some restrictions on the city's ability to limit where towers can be placed.
How does San Antonio have this ordinance? Why do they have it?
Okay, when I did call the city of San Antonio, in other words, they have the tower. It is a certain price. If they collocate once, the second time, their price will be lowered. So, they have two colocations there. If another company or another provider, what they call, and it comes by, and they want to colocate on the same tower, their price comes down. So, their fee or their income for the city is greater. So, that's an incentive for the providers or for the companies to collocate on city property.
Then, why don't we do something like this? Why don't we simply give an incentive where it might be more favorable for the tower provider to place it on city property, but we don't cut out the access of the small businessman? We might give them a break.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I don't think we're...
I thought that's what this ordinance was. I thought that's what we did.
This is... This is... What are you saying? This is a public hearing. Do we have anybody speaking here?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment right before.
Yes, okay.
This isn't to cut out small business. This is to give the city first choice. If we have property where that tower can be placed and the company is comfortable with it, then so be it. If not, the company has the choice to go seek a local vendor or a local supplier.
Mr. McNair, you're here to speak. Please come to the podium, state your name. Your full name, please.
I'm Harry McNair, and I'm here to shed some light on this wording. It really concerns me that we're going from wording that says allow to wording that says Brownsville requires to give first priority to city-owned property. The real purpose of this change is for revenue for the city. That's what Commissioner Atkinson has said. The current ordinance was passed just a couple of months ago, very restrictive with the cooperation of several tower companies, be it T-Mobile, be it Verizon, be it Nextel. They were here and they participated in the process. And let me explain something to you all. The landlord for most of these sites, and I think Mr. Gamas said there's like fifty-some odd towers here, are not Fortune 500 companies, like Trammell Crowe, Simon Properties, or Hunt Properties. Typical landlords in Brownsville, and this is very important, include local businessmen, teachers, veterans, retirees, churches, citizens on fixed incomes. Let me give you two examples that come to my mind real quickly. There's a tower on West Third and Elizabeth Street, brand-new one. Big American flag is flying on it. If you haven't seen it, it's wonderful. But that's a tower. That's just not a flagpole. That site is owned by a small, private landowner on a fixed income. Now, if this ordinance was in place, this tower could be forced to be moved to a city-owned property right on West St. Charles, which is a fire station. So, you would take the livelihood out of this man. There's another one where Macintosh is, off the frontage road, kind of behind BISD. That's at the Vineyard Christian Fellowship Church. That's on church property. They're receiving this minimal income monthly. Now, let me tell you, most of these folks that I speak about, and I know most of them that have these towers on their property, most of them are using them to make house payment, pay their taxes, pay their utility bills, pay their children's education and car payments. What message is the city of Brownsville sending to private landowner, who pay the taxes that you all generate income to use to run the city? If this ordinance was in effect, when these towers were being considered for these areas, the city maybe could have forced these companies to locate on nearby city property. Do you really... Do you... Anybody up here really want to be responsible taking away the livelihood of some of these private landowners? The city should not be competing with the private businesses. Y'all should encourage and support us to expand our business in Brownsville.
Harry?
Excuse me.
Let him speak.
I've been spending a lot of time on this.
Commissioner Laguardia, let him speak.
Somebody talked about ways of raising money. Here, ironically, T-Mobile come into Brownsville. Here's the big corporate giant coming from Washington. The city bends over backwards. It's a good deal. I'm all for him coming, but the city bends over backwards and offers him tax abatements worth over five hundred thousand dollars. Now, the second big thing that came of late was this baseball stadium coming to Brownsville. Wonderful thing. We need it. The city of Brownsville is giving them land, give for a small annual rental fee on fifty acres of land that has a conservative value of over two million dollars. Again, the big outside company comes in, and Brownsville rolls out the red carpet. What's the city doing for the local business to encourage us to expand and hire people? Most of y'all just came off a campaign. In the recent... Issues in the recent campaign, I heard traffic congestion, street improvements, more police and firemen, sidewalk construction, drainage control, job creation, lower utility rates was a biggie. Nobody ever mentioned their platforms, anything about forcing industry to give first priority or locating their business on city property. Nobody said, if you come to town, you have to locate on city property. What if you all would have told T-Mobile, you know, we welcome you here, but we got two big buildings at the airport that are owned by the city, and you either go there or we don't want you? That didn't happen. We rolled out the red carpet and half, over half a million dollars of tax abatements. Many of you during your campaign, again, said over and over again, the city needs to help the small businesses, the little guy, our local people, by lessening the burden of city fees, city taxes, and high utility rates. How many up there talked about utility rates and impact fees? Oh, we need to take the burden off the utility rate payers. Again, here we go. The big companies coming out of town, we make all concessions. If you say the city needs revenue, then why is the city making these financial concessions to these out-of-town companies? If you want to say... If you all say you want to help the locals, then why are you taking these opportunities away from us? I urge each of you all to think about the potential financial impact this amendment will make on the private landowners and the message you're sending to the citizens of Brownsville, we, the taxpayers. This concept is not a function of city government and should be left to the private sector. In fact, I would even challenge, as your city attorney has alleged, the legality of this amendment requiring giving the city first priority when seeking land to install these wireless communication towers. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America operates as a democracy under a free enterprise form of government. Most of us would agree that we already have enough government at all levels in our lives with regulation, restrictions, taxes, and fees. Capitalism is an economic system based on free market, open competition, profit motive, and private ownership with little or no government interference. Capitalism encourages private investment and businesses as compared to a government-controlled economy or socialism. Ladies and gentlemen, we live in the United States of America. This is not Russia. This is not Cuba, and this is not Venezuela. And I think the city of Brownsville should not be trying to get into the private enterprise of being in land management or leasing land in the city. If the city of Brownsville has so much vacant land out there that is nonproductive, I've said it over and over again, what they need to do is sell it on the courthouse steps, put it back in the hands of the private sector, let them pay taxes, and let them maintain it. And that way, your maintenance crews, your green division could be maintaining what needs to be maintained in the city and take this additional burden off their backs. You all have a lot more than one tower on your own city property. Mr. Gamas was wrong. There are several.
Okay.
That was way, way back, when nobody was complaining. Mayor, I think we need to reconsider. Look at this issue very carefully and understand that's not a function of government. You're a very conservative person. I've read many, many things about your background. This is not what you stand for. You stand for a free enterprise system, and I would urge each of... Every one of y'all to table this issue, and let's put it to rest once and for all.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Let me ask a question from staff. Mr. Gamas? Mr. Goza? Mr. Gomis, Mr. Golza, has this ordinance been reviewed carefully and is there a precedent? Is there a precedent?
Yeah.
This, I'm asking staff here, is there a precedent?
It was developed at length. The original version of this, I think, took about six months or so to draft. Members of industry and others contributed.
But the way you have it here, is there a precedent?
Uh, I've not, I've not been able to find any court precedent, any legal decisions.
No, no, I'm talking about cities adopting it the way it is right here.
Um, I'm, I don't know if there are or not, Mayor.
Oh, you don't know if there are. Is it legal?
Anything we do can be challenged.
But is it legal in your opinion?
Um, well, I tried to make it that way.
Okay. Okay, that's all right. Uh, staff, staff, what is your recommendation?
What the commission desires, Mayor.
Yeah, but what is the staff's recommendation?
To leave it as is or change it?
To change it back to...
You should not have any fear of recommendation.
Okay, let me say this, we, the staff, anytime a company walks into our office, we do offer a, a listing of our properties that we have from, properties from the, listed from the city of Brownsville, and we do offer the company...
We're currently doing that.
We're currently doing that since the last time the ordinance passed. Since the last time, we have issued six permits for co-location. Now, the only new tower that we have issued, and it was already in place before the last city ordinance passed in March, was the one that they just finished talking about on West Elizabeth. Yes, we have gotten some, a couple of companies that have walked in into our office since the ordinance was passed the last time, and that's usually common, they walk into our office, they ask for information, then two, three months later, they come back and they get their, their permit. Of course, they ask us, "What's the amendments? What are the city ordinance on communication towers?" But since then, no new towers have been built. Only six co-locations, which is good, because that's what the ordinance is trying, to prevent new towers being built, so that way it can go ahead and maximize the communication tower to its fullest capacity.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
For the close.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Move to approve.
Okay, you got a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, all against?
Nay.
Uh, I vote aye. I have to rely on staff and y'all. I vote aye. Okay, the next one? Next recommendation, next item?
Item 11, Discussion and Action Regarding Instruction to Brownsville Public Utilities Board to Review and Update the July 2006 Capital Improvements Plan and Land Use Assumptions Plan for Water and Wastewater Facilities Eligible to Be Funded by Impact Fees.
Mayor, thank you for coming. Thank you. Counselor, thank you.
And to submit the board's recommendation for any adjustment to the impact fees to the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee.
Okay, during the campaign, there was a lot of issues that were brought up because of the impact fee, and I heard some that, that wanted to have a 10-year land use assumption plan and capital improvement plan. I have no problem with the 10-year, provided they take into account... Ben Medina, you're here, planning department? Okay, would you stand up, please? Would you come to the podium? Ben, you were very involved in this. I have no problem with, with considering, I'm not saying that's the way it should be done, considering that it'd be a 10-year plan, providing that a land use assumption is taken into account for 10 years and capital improvements is taken into account for 10 years. Do you have any problem with that?
No.
As part of staff?
No.
Okay, okay. So if we do this, it would not adversely affect the process to get it done? What it, in a timely manner, I'm talking about? And compliance with Statute 395?
Well, Mayor, 395 is very clear about the process. Basically, what the city commission did last time was that they, I guess, voided all of the proposed ordinances and went back to the old 1990 ordinance. So that's what's in the books today. If you want to do any kind of change to that particular impact fee, we have to go through the process described in the Chapter 395 of the Local Government Code. So yes, it could be done, as long as we follow that very strict process of publication, comment period, et cetera. But no, I agree with you.
Well, you know, because I know to developers, Galansky, you're, you're a developer here. I think 10 years was a, a big thing that some developers were pushing. Do you feel comfortable with that?
I didn't follow that question.
A 10-year, a 10-year plan on the capital improvements instead of a five-year, we did a five-year. As a developer, it's too long?
But let me tell you something real quick. When we went through this, this, all this stuff, I think it was Mr. Medina who showed me something that said it had to be 10 years, right?
Well, that's the norm.
That's a something, that was something you were pressing on me, "Look, it was done wrong, we should have done 10 years. We should have done a land assumption, we should have done these improvements over 10 years."
Yes.
That was the argument on the other side, and, and that's why it's being brought here, to comply with what you were advocating back in the day.
Okay, good. And, and that's the norm, 10 years. And keep in mind also that, that the Chapter 395 of the Local Government Code also requires that, that the commission review this through its kayak annually, but no, no, no less than than, or no less than five years. So it has to be done, so you could review it annually and...
Okay.
And measure the economic, what impacts it's having, et cetera.
When, when it was agreed upon that we did 2100, and it was resented by the city commission, shouldn't at that time, that, that sitting city commission have addressed the kayak to go back and start all over again the way we're doing it now?
Uh, you could, you could have done that, yes.
But it was not done. So according to legal terms, was that what we were supposed to do? When it got reverted back to the 280? Should that city commission, at that time, by Statute 395, had gone back and instructed the kayak to begin the process all over again?
Yes, you could have done that, yes.
No, yes or no?
Yes, you could have done that. Okay, I don't understand your question, are you asking, could the commission possibly have done that? Yes, it could possibly.
Colleagues, Commissioner, please allow me, please allow me to state it. I put this item in the agenda, okay, because we need to move forward, and it needs to get done. I was hoping that I, I could bring in the 10-year, but you're telling me that it would really not, not be helpful to get it done as quickly as possible.
Well, it, it...
Without starting the whole thing over again.
You, anything you do now to change the 280, you're starting again. You have a new kayak that has to go through, I guess, a learning process?
Okay, I don't have any problem with giving the developers the consideration of, let the kayak committee decide and make the recommendation, five years or 10 years. But I have no problem with making that charge back to PUB, that they get started, okay, and consider five or 10 years, but to consider the true cost, okay, for development. That means include the, the debt, everything else like we talked about priorly, to come and, and to update the land use assumption, the capital improvements, and to, for the kayak to, to do its work like it had been done, but with no recommendation, they make no recommendation. It comes to the city commission, and we decide, as it, as it should be, okay? So based on that, I, I...
Mr. Golza?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In order to adjust the rate, we have to have a land use and capital improvement, correct?
Correct.
And tell me, Jeff, we can't adjust the rates up?
That's correct.
Okay.
Not properly.
Not to build, not legally, not properly, we need to do those two things.
Yes, sir.
And that's specifically because we rescinded, or the city commission previously rescinded the increase, is that correct?
Uh, whether we had started from scratch or had gone back and rescinded the existing ordinance, either way, we would need to go through that procedure as outlined in Section 395.
So either way, land use assumption, capital improvement has to be stated, has to be presented, and then we can get going from there?
That's correct. The, historically, PUB would help work up the CIP program, it would be certified by a licensed engineer, then that would, in conjunction with the kayak, that would be formalized and finalized, and then, and only then would it be brought to the commission for you all to pick maximum allowable amount for the impact fees. Yes, that's right.
One other question. And whether it's a five-year or a 10-year term, does the commission or that's required by statute see a definite term?
Either way is permissible by the statute.
Okay.
I think that, as Mr. Medina indicated, that typically, most cities do it on a 10-year basis, but that's up to you all.
And then we can review that either annually or every five years or four years or however we want?
Uh, well, we're actually required to annually report to the Attorney General's Office that we are in compliance, and that implies that, that the kayak will continue to meet and that we will at least annually review the impact fee and make sure that it's still in place and working properly.
And it can be done every six months, doesn't have to be any...
That's right.
I, I just want to make a comment and an observation. It seems to me like several...
Mr. Charlie, finish.
Okay, Mr. Golza's answering my question.
Are you okay?
I just want to make a comment, seems to me like several of these agenda items, we've already voted on, or the past commission voted on, and we keep talking about moving forward, and it just seems to me like we're going back.
Well, you're entitled to that opinion, Commissioner.
I just want to say that for the record and for the viewing public, because...
Commissioner, you're certainly, you're certainly entitled to that. You're certainly entitled to that opinion, but we don't have an impact fee, it's 280, and it's obviously too low. So, you know, let's respect each other and, and have that difference of opinion. Okay, I, I, I want to make the motion to, to discuss, to adopt this as, as stated, with, as long as it's in compliance with Statute 395, with the charge that the PUB and the kayak committee make a recommendation whether to do a five-year, 10-year, okay? And that they take into account all costs in the development and land use assumption capital improvements, okay?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Who opposed? Any opposed?
No. I abstain because we...
Abstain?
Yep, I'm going to support it, aye.
Aye, aye, okay. Thank you, gentlemen, okay. Number 12. And before we move on, I really am sincere about the 10 years, some of the people were very concerned about that, and if it's possible, I'd like to see it done. If not, okay, go on. Item 11, 12.
Item 12, Consideration and Action Regarding a Moratorium on Animal Euthanasia.
Okay, Commissioner, I, I think I stated in my address to the citizens when I got sworn in, I like the opportunity to have a moratorium in place for 90 days, okay, and to give the committee to work to final alternatives to killing pets. I think that pets, it should be a last resort, and like I said in my address, that the pets depend on us to speak for them, and at this time, I think it's very important, because 7,000 pets are being killed annually, and I think there's a better way to deal with this problem than just killing to kill.
Mayor, the only question I have on this, and I'm sorry that I hadn't posed it to you before, and it's nothing major, just, I just wanted to know, at what point, if we have just too many animals, and they're not being adopted, and, you know, we have, what is it, Josh, a three animal, three pet per property rule, or what is that ordinance?
It's based on the space and distance requirement. Normally, it's three pets.
Three pets per property.
Per property.
And if we just don't have the people turning out...
Well, then, then we have to kill, Commissioner, but it should be the last resort, like I said. I'm asking for a 90-day moratorium on this, that's all I'm asking for, for the committee that I charged to come up with alternative plans, see if we can diminish that. Okay, you got a second? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I have a question. Are we, can we hold off on, and keep on the discussion level for a minute?
No, we already have a motion, second. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm going to pass on this one because there's not enough...
Abstain?
I got some questions.
Abstain?
I've got some questions, yeah. I voted for you.
Okay, so it passes. Thank you, gentlemen, and pet lovers of Brownsville, love you too. Thank you. And 13.
Item 13, Consideration and Action Regarding the City of Brownsville Internal Auditor.
This is something that brings transparency to city government. Leandro is here, Landry Garcia from PUB. The way we have it at PUB, the internal auditor works under the auspices of the city commission and the mayor. At PUB, it's under the board and the chairman. He has the latitude to look into things, make recommendations, work with management, and work with, with the commission, in this instance, and he will be working under the auspices of the city commission. It's not a, it's not allowed by charter, but the city manager can appoint him to do that at this time. And I'm asking for that, to bring transparency into our city government. That would be one of the proposals I will take to the charter review committee, to put the, the internal auditor under the auspices of the mayor and the city commission. This puts checks and balances and brings transparency, like for instance, the internal auditor at PUB found where checks were being deposited into files and held there for years, and hundreds of thousands of dollars were being lost. And that was due to lack of internal controls. The internal auditor made some recommendations, and they were adopted, and we, we stopped the leakage, we corrected the problem. And those are the things that he can, he can have the latitude to do, and I welcome it. The city manager said that he had no problem with it, and I would like the opportunity to, to, to do that, to make sure that we're bringing transparency to city government.
Jim, are we allowed to do that under city charter rules?
If I understood the mayor correctly, he was suggesting that we would try to amend the charter to allow us to do that.
Yes.
And no, sir, well, I mean, currently, the way it's written...
You, the legal and the city manager?
Article 5, Section 20 of the, of the charter says that the commission shall deal with the administrative services of the city solely through the city manager. So the way our form of government is currently set up, then you all would give the directive to the city manager to have the city auditor examine or look at whatever...
But the city manager can assign the auditor to work with us, no?
Through him, I mean, you would...
Well, that's what I'm saying, through him.
Yes, I see.
So I mean, he can assign him to work through us. I mean, we can work through him, right?
Hey, but that's the way it currently is.
Like, first, let me, let me, let me finish. If, I mean, we all call the city manager, he's got, he's got a business to run the city. I hate to be calling him for every little thing, okay? When I can call the city auditor and, and tell him what we're looking for, what looking to, what to do, what to recommend, and he can get with the city manager and do that. Now, the city manager has that authority to assign the secretary or whoever he wants. However, he happens to be an expert as an internal auditor, and there's nothing to preclude him from doing that. Is that right? Legally, under charter?
The way the charter and the personnel policies are both written, it's envisioned that you all will go through the city manager to, to implement or to enact whatever services or administrative functions that you want.
Okay, let me make this more clear. Let me make this more clear. Now, if he assigns, I'm working through him, I'm working through the city manager, if he assigns, does he not, isn't that working through the city manager?
Well, it's sort of a circular logic.
Okay, so you recommend against it?
Well, I think that if we read it black and white, the way the personnel policy and the city charter...
Okay, just give me your opinion, please. You recommend against it?
I would recommend against it.
Okay, I'll take your recommendation, let's table this, I'll make the motion to table it.
Second.
Let it, let it be known that I don't, I do not, I do listen to staff, okay? Okay, thank you. Motion to table, second. All in favor?
Aye.
This is one of the things we need to bring to the city charter, I think it's very important to have transparency and accountability. Thank you, Mr. Golza, thank you. Okay, anything else?
14.
Oh, number 14.
Item 14, Consideration and Action Regarding the Contract with Economist.com. Item 14, consideration in action regarding the contract with Economist.com.
Okay, Ben, the Economist.com study does not meet statute 395 requirements to adopt an impact fee. Thank you, Roy. Thank you, Frankie. Does not meet statute 395 to adopt the impact fee, does it?
He's doing an economic study, just-
Pardon me?
He was charged with the basic thing of to review-
Right.
-the Black and Beach study, which is reporting to the kayak, and to assist the kayak in coming with a recommendation to the commission.
But he made changes, like 10 years and stuff like that. I mean, you were there where I was at. The point is this, he cannot sign the engineer's report to adopt the impact fee, right?
No, he's not doing it.
Okay.
And the kayak is gone now, so it's a new kayak.
But let me finish, let me finish.
Come back.
That's a good thing about being mayor, okay?
That would be what?
I just kidding. Guys, the thing is, can he finish the study as it is right now?
At this point, my understanding, he cannot finish the study-
He cannot finish the study.
Because he needs information from P U B.
No, he doesn't need, he needs from the engineers.
Which-
Which would cost like $16,000 more or something like that.
My understanding-
We paid him already.
Our contract was for $70,000. We've paid him approximately over $50,000.
How long is he pending the information from P U B?
I will refer that to P U B officials.
Yep.
Is legal for P U B here?
Yeah.
Send a request.
Here it is.
That's correct.
How long is he pending the information from P U B?
Leandro. Over at least 45 days.
So, Ben, how come you have not advised us of the following, so we could do something about that?
Over 45 days?
Ben, why weren't we advised, so we could address the issue?
Can I say something?
Have been advised, and the mayor did send a letter.
Okay, so the mayor sent a letter requesting the information from P U B. P U B has not provided the information. We've already spent $70,000 on this study, and the only information the study's missing is the information from P U B.
That's not true. Let me tell you what's happening, you know very well. Let me tell what's happened. Okay, let me tell what's happened, because I was there at P U B, and so was Charlie. The information's not coming from P U B, it's coming from the engineers, is that right?
That's correct.
That's right, right?
Engineers at P U B.
And the engineers want to charge $16,000 or some sum to give them the assistance to finish the study. Has nothing to do with P U B, has to do with the engineers.
I believe you have to hire Black and Beach again-
Yes, that's right.
-to provide information that he's requesting. That information will be between 10 and $7,000. P U B's board has declined to pay that amount of money.
Payment, it's money.
And I've deferred that to the city.
So now, the city wants to pay for it, we can go forward. If the city wants to pay for it-
We've already paid this gentleman, three-fourths of the money that he's due. We're three-fourths of the way through the study, and now, between the engineers that P U B hired before, they don't want to provide the information unless they get additional monies, correct?
Of course, yes.
Okay, and P U B isn't going to provide this information otherwise?
P U B is not denying him the information.
I believe they do not have the information, but- They're just denying payment.
And so then-
And he's lacking information.
The recommendation is that we tank the study because we don't want to provide the information, or what?
We don't want to pay for it.
That's your policy.
The city requested Economist.com, not P U B. P U B stance on is that we're not going to pay for something the city requested. That's P U B's stance. If the city wants to pay, then the gentleman can get the information, is that right, Ben?
That's basically it.
That's what it is. The city hired him, so the city should pay for him. That was the consensus. Okay, Leandro, you want to say something?
Leandro Garcia, CFO, Brunso P U B. Jeff Snowden has requested several types of information, and one of them is engineering information, which, as previously mentioned, was captured in previous reports conducted or prepared by other engineers, so we're relying on the engineering firms to go back and based on previous studies to update some of the information. They have also requested some financial information, which has been provided. Some of it, though, has been more related to cost of service type of information, so we've also had questions concerning the contract as it relates to the scope of services related to cost of service, so we're working to get some information. It's been moving targets, new fiscal year, budget planning that's underway, so we did plan to give them the information, but we've been kind of waiting for the engineering side of the information as well.
So it's not just the engineering information, it's also cost of service information from P U B as well?
Exactly, some financial information, which-
Do you have an itemization of the information that should have been provided or hasn't been provided?
Excuse me?
Do you have an itemization of the information-
We have a list of information from Mr. Snowden, and we have proceeded to get some of the information. Some of it is detailed, and it was going to require us to do some functionalization of some asset type of information, so it is, it has taken a little bit of time, but we're ready to proceed at the commission's request.
And it's been how long since he first requested the information?
Information has been, it's been probably close to a month. We did have to touch base with some of the requests with our financial advisor as well, and to make sure that they also get involved in the process, and of course, the consultant that has assisted us with cost of service. So, we want to make sure everybody's on the same page concerning the information that is compiled and provided, so when conclusions are arrived, that no one is at a disadvantage to proceed otherwise, you know, we want to make sure we're all proceeding together, whether it involves a cost of service rate, a bond issue, an engineering requirement, everybody needs to be on the same page with regards to the information, yes.
Thank you.
But the city considered paying the remainder, or they don't have no interest in paying it, you know, that's not on the agenda, but I mean-
The only question that I have, real quick, if I can talk, is, we're going to pay these guys an extra $16,000 on top of the $70,000, but something that they can't certify, something they can't put a stamp on, and basically, they cannot tell us the economic effects on Brownsville unless we, as a city, give them a number to work on. Hey, if we've charged this number, this is what the growth is going to be. This is what you're going to do to the economy. We're not providing him a number. I called the attorney general up there in Austin, I asked him, what are we doing? I mean, are we in violation by not providing a number for Brownsville? He goes, you've been in violation long enough. You are in violation of the law right now. I go, what is this economist? I'm like, they're not certified. They're not certified.
The issue-
Certified engineers.
The issue is specifically whether or not, what is the issue as far as capital improvements, land use, and then he's going to come up with a number based on his economic review or financial analysis of those numbers, and if we've already-
That's correct.
-ponied up X number of dollars, we're going to drop it. I think that this should be tabled, and that we should look at this issue and decide where we are and who we throw away. How much money?
About over $50,000.
Okay.
Well, to me, it was wasteful when they did it.
I mean, I don't think any, well, at least I wasn't.
It was wasteful when they did it.
Mayor, mayor-
Okay, calm down.
Table.
What did I say? There's a motion to table, do I have a second?
Mayor, could I just make one more comment, please?
Please.
Mayor Almada and Commissioner Turianni, when we discussed this the last time, I made a proposal to the city commission, to that current mayor and to the city commission, that even when Economist.com returned with whatever information that we're going to give to the city commission, whoever that sitting city commission was, still had to come back and make a decision and decide on a number. It was, even if Economist were to give us a number, this city commission, as a voting entity, still has to come back and decide what that number is going to be, whether Economist.com says 280 or whether it says 4,000. This body needs to sit down and make that decision. The final decision will be made by this voting entity. At that time, I made a recommendation to the city commission that we not spend that money, because at the end, we're going to be the ones that are going to make that ultimate decision, irregardless. We're going to have to sit down and come to an agreement and come to a number. So-
Okay, we have a motion to table, a second, okay. Discussion's over. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I'm against tableing it now, so therefore, the discussion can be, what do we do? Do we pay, or do we just terminate, or what?
I would like for them just to give us what they have, so it's not going to matter anyway, because we're redoing the process. They don't have a number. This was a political thing, just to prolong the impact fees, but, yeah.
Yeah, I disagree with you.
Well, we got to do what's right.
If you all talk at the same time, nobody can be heard or understood.
We got to do what's right for the citizens.
Talk one at a time.
Spending $50,000 of citizen money without having a result seems kind of arbitrary.
That's what they did by doing it when they did it.
The points has been, well, made on both sides, okay, and there was a motion to table, and it didn't pass.
The two studies that we did before.
Let me interject and give you my two cents worth of wisdom here. Economist.com, and I spoke with him, I attended meetings, he can change, and it's only one person who's doing it all. He's making decisions for the city, P U B, and the kayak of how, and he should do the report and how the report's going to come out. That's, he's making all the decisions. For instance, he was taking Black and Beach study, correct me if I'm wrong, from five years, and he made it to 10 years. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, and he's doing it without taking into account the land use assumption for 10 years. That's not scientific. And he wasn't taking into account the capital improvements for 10 years. That's not scientific, and that's not, please, let me, Commissioner, let me add my two cents worth of wisdom, okay? So if he's doing this, to me, he tells me that it's not an objective study, in my opinion, okay? Now, he cannot finish the study unless the city commission is willing to pay $16,000 additionally, which he should absorb when he was hired out to do the study. That's his cost. He should have taken that cost into consideration. He shouldn't be coming to P U B, to the city, or anybody for additional money. He was contracted to do the study, he failed to take those costs into consideration. In my opinion, because his study cannot be certified in compliance with statute 395 to adopt an impact fee, and no engineer is going to sign off on his study in order to submit it to comply with statute 395 to adopt an impact fee. No engineer's going to certify his study. The study is useless, it's worthless. Am I right, Ben?
I think he brought a lot of good information.
Am I right, Ben?
I think he brought a lot of good information, Mayor, I just would have to agree to that.
You're correct that he can't certify-
Okay, I'm correct, that's enough. I'm correct, okay.
I can't be an engineer.
Okay, so we got, sorry, let Mr. Turianni finish here, and then we're going to close this up. Okay, Mr. Turianni?
He provides a financial analysis of what the impact would be to the city economically, and as far as what growth we would have.
What number? Based on the certified CIP by P U B's engineers, based on that certification, the mayor might as well correct, he's not going to certify any CIP because that has been done.
And you never asked him to do that either. What was that?
No.
The city commission was not for him to do that, they were asking for a financial analysis of the-
And he was not doing that.
Economic.
And he was not doing that.
Yeah.
And he was not doing that, right, Ben? He was not doing that.
Well, now you're just moving.
It's true. He was not doing that. He himself said, he himself said, I cannot do that, right, Ben?
That's correct.
He said, I cannot do that.
That's the information he has.
Okay, let's close this up now.
I feel that-
Okay, Commissioner, let's close this up now. Do I have a motion to-
Mayor, I make a motion that we cease contracts with Economist.com, pay them what is due to them at this time for their services, and that we cease services with Economist.com.
And he turn over what he's done.
But have them turn over to us whatever they have done.
Yes.
Sorry, have him turn over what he's provided, okay.
Second, man.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we got three nays and four ayes. The motion carries. Okay, can I have, before we end this, I want to thank my commissioners and the audience for participating and coming to the swearing-in and everything else. I'm going to depend on all of us here to unite our city together. I mean, there's a lot of good things that's going to be happening to Brownsville. There's certain things we're going to disagree on, but that's okay. We need to get beyond that and go to the next item and work for the benefit of Brownsville. I'm here to do that, I'm here to be your mayor, I'm here to do what's right, and I'm here to work with my commission and the citizens of Brownsville. I want to thank you for coming. Can I have a motion to-
Do we have public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I will move the public comment to the first part of the agenda. I thought the mayor had done that, I don't know why. Okay, let's have the public comment, please.
Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
But let him speak. I will move it up to the beginning of the agenda, start of next meeting.
As per our charter, if a person is going to address the city commission, they need to do it 15 minutes prior to the meeting. They need to sign up.
We have a form that they need to fill out, and-
Okay, did anybody fill out that form?
I don't have any.
I apologize, if you can hold your comments for next meeting, I'll be more than happy to recognize you. But go enjoy yourself, I have a party going on at V I C C, let's go by this, come by and say hello. Thank you so much.
You in a jury?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
If those who, I guess they can stay here.
We're here live in the city commission chamber again with a little bit of-
The-
After the meeting, after the first meeting of newly elected mayor-
Kayak. Because it got to where-
It's getting a little confusing there.
I know.
You're back.
Yes, it feels great to be back. It's wonderful that the people have honored me for the second time to be their mayor, and that's the highest honor any citizen can receive on behalf of the citizens of Brownsville. And I'm very grateful and humble, and I thank them for it.
Some of the items they brought up tonight, euthanasia and, of course, impact fees, impact fees has been your thing since you've been on the P U B board, actually. You intend to follow through with all of that?
That was a campaign promise, and I mean to fulfill that promise, to make sure the citizens get a fair rate for their utilities, and that the cost of new developments is not being burdened on them. This is to ensure that the utility rates are kept low and that it allows responsible growth. I've made that promise, and I'm going to fulfill it. And we got, we got to start, we got it, the process started, and we're going to see it to its end, and it'll be fair and just for everybody.
It appeared, just from this first meeting, that there, it may be breaking down on a series of four to three votes. Do you think, are you going to try to work with the other three?
Of course. Every issue is based on the merits, each one has to vote our conscience. Some may decide to go politics, I try to keep that out in my decision-making. You know, it's just the new change, people voted for change, and some people may not want that change yet, or they may come around later on, or, you know, we have to educate ourselves on the issues and vote our conscience, and that's what I did.
You know, I was one of the few, I am one of the few people who was here when you came on 16 years ago. What do you think has changed? What's the biggest change you can see in 16 years?
Well, the city has grown tremendously, but unfortunately, we have not kept up with the growth. For instance, when I was here, we had 17 police officers per shift. Right now, we got like 21 per shift. We have five ambulances, and the city has grown so much when we need 15 ambulances. I was unfortunate to be at Texas State Bank when a customer fainted and hit the concrete tile floor and was bleeding from the head, and I thought he was having a heart attack, and I called, we called 911, and I was trying to keep the bleeding from continuing, and when the fireman got there, the ambulance never got there, I said, well, where's the ambulance? And they said, well, we have to call the Sprengs for an ambulance, because we only have five, and all five are being used right now. So can you imagine, Bill, if that had been a loved one with a heart attack, he would have died right there, waiting for an ambulance, and I'm not going to let that happen. I'm going to work very hard to make sure that we fulfill the commitment to the city to keep up with its needs by buying the needed equipment for the public safety, firemen, policemen, emergency services, and paving our streets, dealing with our drainage problems, all those things that the city has grown so much, but we have not kept up with its growth, and I plan to do the best I can to improve the quality of life for our citizens of Brownsville.
Well, this will be the first, this is the first of about nearly 100 regularly scheduled meetings that you'll be doing, and I want to wish you the best.
Well, one more thing, Bill. I think you asked about the euthanasia, and this is a good opportunity to get it out to the citizens of Brownsville. Please be responsible with your pets. Don't let them run loose, because, one, they can get killed by an automobile. Two, the kid could end up on the animal shelter, and in three days, they're, they're, they're put down, they're put to sleep. And that's unfortunate. The pets depend on us. We're going to work very hard to, we have a ninety-day moratorium on euthanasia. That means no kill for ninety days. But the owner, the citizens of Brownsville have to help us. We can't be keep picking up pets and overcrowding our, our, our dog pound, because once the overcrow is there, then we have to kill them, because we have to make room for more. So, the, the citizens of Brownsville can take responsibility for their pets, ensure they're spayed, ensure they're neutered, ensure they have their vaccinations, and keep them secure in your backyard. Help us to, to build a better city. Help us to deal with the problems overcrowding at the animal shelter. Help us to where we don't have to kill pets. We've been killing us seven thousand pets a year. That's too much. Pets depend on us. They have feelings. They feel hunger. They feel pain. They, 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 they want love. They want care and protection. That's our responsibility. God created life for us to enjoy, either to hunt and eat, or to enjoy, in this case, by domesticating pets for our enjoyment. And it's irresponsible of a citizen to let the pet loose and let him fend for himself. And then he is sentenced to death because they're irresponsible.
Mayor, welcome back. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now, we're, we're looking for our city commissioner Anthony Troyani, who's right here. He'll be, he'll be right with us. Talking to the mayor. Mr. Anthony Troyani, thank you very much for joining us. Congratulations, I think. This was a little taste of what you got to...
Oh, I, I enjoyed it. I had a good time.
It's democracy in action.
It is democracy in action.
What, what do you plan to do for the next, I mean, this is the first of about a hundred meetings now, scheduled meetings. What would you like to tackle? What are your plans, and what would you like to see done?
Well, you know, I think one of the things that we were addressing during the, the election campaign was infrastructure. It has to do with quality of life issues. It has to do with, you know, how can we improve our community and bring business in? Those are all very basic tenants, and I think everybody agrees that we need to do those things to improve our community, educational issues, all of those things. I, I think we have a consensus on. It's how we get there, and I think that becomes a, a big issue. And, and one of the things that I'd like to see as we start going is, is that we have more transparency in government. And I, I think that the mayor also indicated that he'd like to have that. And one of the things, the ways I think we get there is that we start having applications for appointees. We start having some sort of briefing on what the issues are going to be before we get there. Obviously, this was the first meeting. There was obviously an agenda set in place before I got here. And so, I'm, you know, attempting to react to that at this point. And I, I think we're doing a good job, and I think we want the same things at the end of the day.
This is, doesn't really have anything to do with the issues or the politics, but how did it feel to, to take the oath and take your place up there at that table?
Oh, that was wonderful. The first time I came into this, this room was through coming to federal court with Judge Vella. You know, I would, came in as a young lawyer and, and walked across the bar and looked up, and Judge Vella was sitting there, and you know, he was a very commanding presence, and, you know, it was, it was awe inspiring. It was very nice to sit where he sat and, and be able to look out over the, the audience and, and, you know, address the issues. And hopefully, I'll do half as good a job, or even a quarter as good a job as he did, you know, as far as making decisions on behalf of the citizens here in Brownsville.
Well, we'll be going live every meeting, and as I said, you have about a hundred regularly scheduled meetings during your, your next four years, and I want to wish you the best and welcome you to the city commission. Thank you very much, City Commissioner Anthony Troyani.
Thank you.
And there you have it. Two new faces, well, one sort of new face, one new face on the city commission. They'll be with us for the next four years. Thank you for watching. For Channel 12, for the city of Brownsville, I'm Bill Young.